Okay, everybody, welcome. I am going to, at 6:30 PM, open up the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, calling to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So you guys can all rise and recite with me if you choose to. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this is our organizational meeting, our annual organizational meeting, and what that means is that we welcome new members to the school committee. And so I'd like to introduce to you and to our communities two new members here tonight. The first is from Stowe, and it is Dana Ellis.
Hello.
Hello, Dana.
Welcome.
And then we have another member from Lancaster who's new, is Jackie Reiner.
Welcome.
I would not want to put you on the spot, but if there's anything that you would just like to say or anything that you wanted to congratulate being here with us tonight in your term, please feel free.
So my name is Dana, I live in Stowe, I have three small children, two are currently at center, and my third will join kindergarten in fall. So I'm just really excited to offer perspective from somebody who is not in education and also has little littles in the school system, so excited to meet all of you.
I'm Jackie, I'm a clinical psychologist in training, I'm currently actually in a school district and have two children, I have a seventh grader at Luther Burbank and a third grader at Mary Rollinson. And I'm very excited to be here, it's been many years in the making that I've wanted to run, so I'm excited to serve.
Fantastic. Well, we are very lucky to have you both, lucky to have all of you, really, we have a pretty dynamic school committee right now, and I'm really pleased to serve alongside all of you, so very excited. Okay, guys, so as the regional agreement dictates, we shall now conduct the school committee reorganization. And so, Jo, feel free to jump in here and correct me if I'm screwing up. The first thing that we will do is election of chair, and just for everybody's education here, ultimately what happens is we put nomination, a nomination on the floor, and then somebody needs to second that nomination, and then we vote. If that nomination does not receive a majority of the votes, we then will wait for another nomination, which hopefully comes. So we'll start with you.
May I, may I point a clarity on that? So with regards to the nomination process, and forgive me if I'm not as intimate with the regional school agreement as you are, Madam Chair, if you make a nomination, does the regional school agreement dictate that we go to an immediate vote after one nomination, or can multiple nominations then be put in for a particular position?
So it doesn't indicate, but we could certainly see if there's anybody who, we could basically allow all the nominations to come forth and then take them in order. There's nothing that would prevent that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I'm just asking, because you said you're gonna take a nomination, second it, then go to a vote.
Yeah, which is what we typically done, but we don't have to.
No, I was just gonna, I don't think the agreement provided that, because normally you could just say, we can open nominations, then we close nominations, one, two, three candidates. I don't think there's gonna be any contest for any of these positions, but I was just curious.
No, it doesn't, I don't think, kind of restrain us in any way, shape, or form, so do you have preference?
No, yeah, my pref, well, if you're asking my preference, my preference would be open nominations.
Yeah.
And...
And then we'll vote them in order?
Well, you, yeah, you could vote them, and let's just say, all right, we have one person, are there any further nominations, see, not, therefore, closed nominations.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm. And I don't think there's gonna be, I don't think there's gonna be any contest in this, but...
I'll be racing to this. Okay, so I think that that's fair. So let's open up nominations for chair.
I'll move to nominate Lea DiGrito for chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
It's awkward.
Okay, so I'll, I'll close that part of the process at this point, and any discussion on the motion? And all those in favor? All right, guys. You're rolling one more.
Do we, shouldn't we impeach?
Give me my hour. Okay, everybody, so let's move to open nominations for the next leadership position, and that is vice chair.
I move to nominate Amy Cohen for vice chair.
I'll second that. Okay. Any other nominations?
May I, Madam Chair, may I, may I confer one moment with the current vice chair?
You may.
Yeah, thank you, I would nominate my horse for, oh, okay, I'm sorry, did you?
I respectfully decline the...
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said, oh, never mind, I would draw the nomination, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you said, you were...
Okay, so, any other nominations for vice chair? All right, I'm gonna close nominations for vice chair, and there is a motion on the floor to vote for Amy Cohen, is there any discussion? I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Chandra.
Since it was referenced earlier, I went and looked at the regional agreement, and it says these are supposed to be the ballot.
Says what?
Ballot vote.
Uh, is that the old or the new? It's the one on the website?
It's the one on the website, and it says it was revised in 2023, so I don't know.
Yeah, so, one thing that I was just advised of last week is that that has not been approved by the commissioner yet, so it's not technically the regional agreement that we are following. So we are still under the guise of the old one. Now, Master of Law, I think actually does require a ballot vote. Hmm.
With one person?
With one person, it's not a problem, so we're just gonna go ahead. So, and you guys can, you can get, give me the fine. Anybody have any more discussion?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Are you okay with that, Amy? You look, your face is kind of like, I don't know if I like this idea.
No, that, yes, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I just...
I hope this wasn't a surprise.
What?
I hope this wasn't a surprise.
It wasn't a surprise, and I think, no, I just was curious how, I think the look was reflecting what was, happened after the nomination, so.
All right, guys, so all those in favor of Amy serving as vice chair? Thanks, Amy. And we'll pass a gavel from Mike to Amy. Very good, very good. Okay, guys, so the next leadership position is actually the secretary, which I think requires, it is actually technically appointed. And so what I would just like to do now is ask, hi, come on in, come on in. Hi, Lori. Yeah, join us, welcome. You started a little bit about.
No worries.
I'm wondering if our, if our secretary is willing to continue with the job?
I'm willing if you want me to. If you, if you have someone else that you would prefer, I'm, I'm happy to defer to your, your, your preference, but I'm happy to continue in that role.
I am happy that you're happy to continue in that role, Jo, we really appreciate you taking that on, it's a technical job to take care of the executive session minutes and just be the general all-around supporter of the leadership team, so fantastic. So guys, that concludes the reorganization of the Nishoba School Committee for the 23-24 school year. Thank you, everyone. Yay! Okay, Amy?
It was a surprise to me.
So fantastic, welcome. Okay, guys, we are gonna go to letters to you now, and that is the meeting calendar, which is in the meeting materials, and you're just gonna bring it up for us, or you can bring it up on your computer. Alita's worked a little bit of her magic here, color coding this to all get out. So before we make a motion to accept this calendar, are there any things that you want to bring up, anything that you might think are troubling or problematic? Please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I respectfully ask the committee to consider, as we look at the January and February dates, the 3rd is coming just immediately after that vacation week, and then we have the 17th, and then it's actually four weeks until we get to February 14th, until the next meeting. I would respectfully request that we move the January 3rd meeting to January 31st, to take care of that interval. That gives us then a two-week interval coming out of the break for the first meeting, which is our annual budget or CHOP, and then moves in our regular pattern of first meeting, last meeting of the month.
Anybody have a problem with that? Any objection?
I have one question.
Go right ahead, Dana.
So if you moved the 3rd, then you're saying there would be, again, from the 13th of December until the 17th of June?
Yeah.
Five weeks.
Which is a big interval. I mean, what we would, what I think I would appreciate doing is potentially leaving the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st on the calendar, and if the 3rd, and we can do whatever you guys want to do, but we could leave all three January dates on?
Well, 30th, 31st is extended.
31st doesn't mean, there's no meaning.
That's just once. Yeah, I think that's the issue.
Right, but we would add the, you're saying add the 31st.
You wanted it to replace the 3rd.
But I'm saying we leave them all on there. We could do that, too.
Yeah, there is no meeting on the 31st, so we'd have to add one.
Add one.
I would say, given that we're in late January, and we're approaching the heart of the budget season, it's probably a good idea to add the 31st.
Definitely add the 31st, but do you want to keep the 3rd on there for now, or do you... Yeah.
Yeah, because there's only one meeting in December.
Yep.
Could you scroll down so we can see April, May, and June also?
Sure.
Because I just remember from this year, we had a break in March, which was kind of odd.
Now, we met a time, because the budget got way too far.
It's different, it's different this year. I just, yeah, there was one week that was off that felt great, but then it was, got in the way of getting, taking care of business.
I think that was because of the, the school vacations fell weirdly last year, like the February vacation was early or something, so we only, I think, had one meeting, or something like that. But the, the way that it is right now, we have two meetings in every month.
Okay.
And January would have three.
Why, why is March 6th yellow?
That's the budget. Summer workshop, budget workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, it should, should be there.
Yeah, so the budget workshop is the public hearing, right?
Oh.
That's what the 6th, March 6th would be, the budget hearing, because we have to pass the budget by March 15th, so we would vote it on the 13th, we have the work, the hearing a week prior, typically. So maybe just up in the coding, Alita, on the yellow box?
Quick hearing.
Put, yeah, budget workshop slash, right?
If we added the 31st, would we reflow the in-person meetings, so there's still every other meeting from there, or just have two in-persons in a row?
The 17th has to be, well, it doesn't matter, the budget workshop is virtual this year, I think.
You're talking about January?
Yeah, so if in January, the 17th is virtual, I would think that the, the 3rd meeting in January would also be virtual.
That's what we did this year.
So the 31st would also be virtual, and then just keep it the way that it is otherwise. So the 31st would turn orange. What do you guys think? Keep all three?
Mm-hmm.
And if we determine that the 3rd is not necessary, we can cancel that meeting? All right, so Alita, you'll make those changes? Any other questions or comments about the schedule? Keep in mind that subcommittee meetings are kind of scheduled ad hoc, and according to the membership's availability, so that will be on here in real time.
So the summer workshop date is locked then at the 23rd?
I mean, yeah.
Soft lock?
Soft lock, but yeah. In August, Jan.
All right, guys, so I'm gonna move to accept this calendar as discussed in this meeting
with the one change that Alita will make. Do you have a second? One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Okay, thanks, Alita, for building that. All right, so school committee goal-setting workshop date, that is actually what Mike was just talking about, so this is really just an FYI, that's gonna be on August 23rd. Alita, any idea if you're gonna maybe try to schedule at the same place?
I can, I just didn't want to until it was, but I can reach out to them, if that's where you want to be.
So last time we were at Wedgewood Country Club in Stowe, trying to keep it in the district. Anybody have any other preference, or we don't necessarily need to decide it right now, but...
Could you just provide a little bit more details? Would that be a day-long event, what does it entail?
So the workshop date has historically been from like five, five to eight-ish, where we all meet, we have dinner, but we also do a lot of the, like, we continue with the organization of the committee, so the most important thing we did, we do is we recheck our protocols, we also set our goals for the year. So that's really what the workshop is designed for, the superintendent and his team will also perhaps take a little bit of the time just to, I think you shared the strategic plan with us last year, and, so you know, our goals are also interlocked with their goal-setting, and so we want to understand what they're gonna be prioritizing, and then our goals will kind of support that. About three hours, Wedgewood Country Club last time around, any objection to that? Okay, so Alita will see what their availability is anyway.
Just a second.
Okay.
As long as I don't have all tournament and everything.
Right. Okay, so you guys can put that in your calendar, August 23rd, like, maybe do four to eight, reserve four to eight in your calendars?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. On that note, though, if you would, Alita, will you go to the materials for me? So guys, in the meeting materials, I have reposted the survey for the goal-setting. I, one of us who, not including me, one of us has filled it out, so no judgment, but I really do need us all to fill this out before the workshop. So just take some time, I think that it's a pretty straightforward form, but it basically hyperlinks at the top our goal sharing out that we did at the la, one of the last meetings, and it kind of identifies all the things that we want to continue working on in the next school year. So click on that link, you can review what we feel would be accomplished and still need to work on, and then kind of provide some feedback, even if you are a new member, your fresh eye will be really useful, so try to fill out as much as you can. And then as you get down to, I think that it kind of says, you know, what do you think we should, give us some other constructive feedback on what you think we did, and also there should be a question of what you think we should do. Yeah, so the first question says, provide feedback on the goal attainment, what are you proud of, what do you think we can improve, and that will ultimately drive the discussion at the workshop on what our goals should be. So try to take it to heart and, and think forward, because the next question is a really good one. Okay, thanks, Alita. So that is that. On the material page, you're also gonna find a second survey there. I don't want to put you guys on the spot now, but if you could fill this out shortly, there are some subcommittees that do need to meet over the summer, in particular personnel, and so fill this out, identify which subcommittees you prefer, and I will do my very best to kind of divide the work amongst all of us, there are 11 of us, but if you look at the survey, you'll see that there are actually quite a few standing subcommittees, special, like, new advisories and longstanding advisories that we need to sit on. Negotiations will probably be rather limited, we still have, can I do this? We still have the Unit C contract that needs to be negotiated, Unit A is something that is at the end of the process, so the people who sat on negotiations this past year have completed that task, it might be a good idea for those same people to sit on negotiations again, because there are gonna be so many similar conversations, so consider that, Amy and me, but fill this out as soon as you can. And if you feel like you need to provide any context, I didn't allow for that, but just shoot me an email. Okay, all right, cool. Thanks again, Alita. Okay, guys, so that wraps up the reorganization. Anything else good for the order? All right, we're gonna move on to citizens' comments and hearts. I do see a couple of friends in the audience who have a comment to make, so if you guys would like to join us at this desk here, please feel free, just tell us who you are. So just for anybody who is new or anybody out there watching, citizens' comments are the standing agenda item, it's an opportunity for any member of the community to come and speak to the school committee. Each person who speaks, they have a vault, three minutes, considering there's not a gigantic line behind you, I'm not timing you, but that's typically around how long they take. We also ask that citizens' comments don't become repetitive, again, there's only, I think, one comment, so that's not a big problem tonight, but this is something that we welcome citizens to come and do every single meeting, and it's especially effective when we're in person, so we welcome you, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bendler, I'm a Lancaster resident, my daughter took the high school, I'm also a member of the Dear J Advisory Subcommittee, I'm a Subcommittee, I'm a Commendative Advisory. So for those of you who are new, Dear J stands for Diversity, Equity, Awareness, and Racial Justice, and we have written a statement, I'm reading on behalf of Dear J. Dear Nishoba Regional School Committee, the Diversity, Equity, Awareness, and Racial Justice Advisory Committee stands in solidarity with the LGBTQ+ community, we celebrate the lives of every member of our community and believe all belong, no matter their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. The hateful rhetoric and threats posted to the Florence Sawyer School Twitter page against our LGBTQ+ community at large and our faculty, staff, and scholars in particular do not represent the district's vision for our educational community, nor our core values of a quote "sense of belonging" and a quote "safe, caring, and inclusive community for all." We are incredibly thankful for Superintendent Downing's speedy response to the threats towards our LGBTQ+ community. By quickly condemning hate speech and violent threats, Superintendent Downing showed that our district is thoroughly committed to our stated values and our strategic plan. Today, we ask the entire Nishoba Regional School Committee to join us in showing our unwavering commitment to our core values, particularly a consistent demonstration that we prioritize belonging for all our scholars, families, staff, and educators. Foundational to the work ahead is an NRSC resolution publicly declaring its full support for our LGBTQ+ community members, similar to the anti-racism resolution that the committee reaffirmed on January 12th, 2022. Dear J looks forward to partnering with you to draft this statement in line with our advisory role. A resolution is the first step in demonstrating our commitment. To fully support our LGBTQ+ family, our district must be proactive, we must invest in programs, trainings, and curricula that support our scholars directly, we must care for the emotional well-being of all individuals, ensuring we have thoroughly trained school counselors and social workers who can easily meet the needs within our community. We must have structures, policies, and protocols of action to address incidents of hate and bias and ensure accountability. We must embrace all stakeholders, students, educators, staff, family, and friends, to do everything we can to meet the needs of every person within our district. We can no longer be idle, in the research that we will provide, there is extensive evidence that when we have allowed a school climate where LGBTQ+ students are threatened, either physically or verbally, their educational outcomes plummet. Moreover, research also shows that LGBTQ+ youth who report marginalizing treatment at school are at higher risk for substance abuse, anxiety, depression, and suicidality. When we fail to act in a proactive manner, we are also failing to live up to our core values and failing our LGBTQ+ community members, those that love them and our community at large. As with all equity work, we must act across all levels within our system to remove every policy and practice that holds the power structures that continue to promote the marginalization of LGBTQ, LGBTQ+ members of our society. We must actively create spaces where the LGBTQ+ folks within our towns feel safe, loved, and supported. NRSD has an opportunity to be a regional leader in this space by demonstrating that we stand strongly in our values of inclusion and belonging for everyone within our community. In solidarity, the Dear J Advisory Committee. We will be emailing this along with the resources that I mentioned to the entire committee, so you have them, so you can see the research that we read, and some of the resources we'd like to contribute.
Thank you for that. We really appreciate you asking. Thank you. So typical of our protocol, citizens' comments are not necessarily something that we discuss or debate, however, there are, there's an element of every single agenda that says items for the next agenda, and if there's ever something that you guys feel the citizens' comments have brought up that you want to address at a meeting, you can request to put it on a next agenda. All right, so let's move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the consent agenda. So, maybe I'd like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda of June 7th, 2023, continuing draft meeting minutes of May 24th, 2023, and May 31st, 2023, as well as the warrants of June 9th, 2023.
I try, turn the second.
Second.
I'm gonna give it to Sharon. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
So on page three, sorry, page four, it talks about the OED grant, and it references superintendent friend, so I just wanted to make sure, is it referencing our superintendent or assistant superintendent?
So, there he goes, assistant superintendent friend. So Alita will make that adjustment. Thanks, Jackie. Which date was that?
That's the 24th.
All right, all those in favor of accepting it as with that change that Alita will make? Raise your hand. Excellent. Okay, and after the consent agenda, we go to school, school committee chairperson update. I have no update, we have no student representative present with us today, and we, do you guys know if Hansi will continue to be our representative?
I believe so.
Awesome, and will, will you try to bring an additional person?
Yes, that will happen after student council elections next year.
Fantastic, in September, so we are so grateful that Hansi will continue to come and visit us and give us updates. All right, let's transition over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your recognition. I am happy to be a facilitator of the superintendent's report this evening, and first up is our Finance and Operations Director, Russell McCarron, is going to update the committee on the RFP process for equity audit. Russell McCarron.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to update you. As the school committee is aware, the district did engage in a request for proposal process in an attempt to contract for the purposes of an equity audit. The district was not able to execute a contract for any of the proposals due to the criteria not being met at an acceptable level and/or the cost proposals well beyond our stated budget for this important work. The district still values this necessary work, and during the process, a new possible avenue revealed itself. The new pathway would involve the district leadership in a greater, in larger role through facilitated work by an outside consultant, we'll be pursuing that. We'll be contacting representatives from possible firms in order to initiate this new avenue and report back our next steps to the school committee, as remain committed to the critical work for all students.
Any questions there before we move on to the district work?
So did we, did we underestimate the cost of this type of audit, or, yeah, I guess that was my question.
I don't, I don't think we did. When we did our initial inquiry with other districts as to what they were doing for requests for proposals and what their contracts were, I think we were sort of right in line with, with the size of our district and what we thought the scope of the work would need to be. What we found out, and even through the, in an attempt to negotiate with one of the proposals from one of the firms, talking about a contract, was they found that the amount of work that they were doing to do this work, they were underestimating it in the past, and they've since raised their prices to match the amount of work it does take, so I thought that was sort of, was interesting, but that did, again, reveal itself, a new pathway that's out there. Using this RFP to do that work felt like it was outside the scope of the... Um, using this RFP to do that work felt like it was outside the scope of the proposed work plan, which would sort of be in violation of 30B, um, which is why we're stepping back and we'll use 30B in a different way to reach out to firms and say, can you facilitate this work with us versus doing all of it for us?
Russ, can you just illuminate 30B?
Uh, so chapter 30B is our procurement laws within the state of Massachusetts. Um, and if you remember way back in October or September, I let the committee know that the, 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 the thresholds were changing. We still did the RFP, even though our budget was within a threshold where we could just see quotes, but we felt like we wanted to see proposals, um, versus just get price costs, um, from firms. So, again, it, it worked in our favor in order to develop a new process to approach the work, but I think will be advantageous, especially for our, uh, district leadership, uh, not just within this room, but obviously across the district as we, we look at, um, the facilitation of it versus just the, the outside firm doing the work. So if, still within our budget, we can use a pathway of reaching out to firms and getting price proposals based on what we are asking for. Um, we won't do a full RFP again, uh, just because of the timeliness of this, we wanna get started.
So, yeah, Amy.
Are there other school systems doing it the, the new way that you're talking about?
We don't know quite yet, but that is a very good question that we'll be certainly asking around about, yeah, like we did with the RFP.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
This is more to you. Where did we land with regards to providing some in-house equity training for the school committee?
So it was going to be nestled in the larger exploration. So I think that what we decided at the workshop last year was that we didn't wanna get out ahead of the superintendent's, um, plan and do work that might even be counterproductive to what the district was doing and that the school committee would be an element of the audit that the district did. And so I still think that that's wise, although you guys can weigh in on that.
I, I guess the, the kind of training that I had in mind, I don't, I don't, I don't think would interfere, and I think it would probably be good as decision-makers and representatives of our town if we had that kind of a training.
I just don't know, we looked for it a little bit. And it was, it's just really hard to find, and they, they want, the RFP piece just shows that they want the purpose to be very targeted. And I feel like at this point, we don't really know what we don't know. And so the last time we had this discussion, we were all really struggling with, and I think it was two years ago, actually, in like the library room that we were in, um, at the, the two workshops ago, where we were just really struggling with, what is even our purpose, how can we get our heads around this? Yeah.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, as part of what Ms. Mulcain presented, we'll present that as one of the questions and interests. So as we work with this pathway, we can come back to the committee with a recommendation.
I was actually, yeah, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, um, trying to understand whether we are still going to end up with the same kind of end result going through the new pathway, because I was really an advocate of this equity audit. Um, and I saw one of the benefits of using an outside firm is getting kind of an outside perspective. Um, so I'm just wondering how the process will unfold now if we're, it sounds like we're gonna be doing it in-house, but relying on, um, an expert to help us facilitate the audit using in-house, in-house resources, is that an accurate kind of way to describe it or?
I, I think it's a fair way to paint it, although without detail would be difficult to say. Um, you know, when you look at the proposals and the scope of the proposals, the costs were so far ranging that it's a matter of meeting the criteria, what we can execute according to what we budgeted and set forth. So we have to work within those parameters, because those, those are the promises we made to work within. So that's what we need to do.
Amy.
So I agree with Amy, but I guess I'm curious that if you have the support of the people who you'd be asking to help with this inside, do they have the bandwidth to take on something like this? It seems like when you were pushing it outside, that was a great way to, you know, not have to be bodying down resources within the district. And again, like adding another thing to their plate, I can imagine would require a lot of, um, I don't know. They, they would need to be on board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I wanna caution the committee, we haven't put anything forward that paints a picture. So I would, I would check any assumptions at the moment of what that may be. Um, because we wanna work through the company, find out the details of those things, takes and bids in, in order to assess that work. Nobody in our entire school system is gonna go through deep equity work with having to do work and have more on your plate, period. You have to. If you're gonna do this work, you have to do it. It's not something that's done and you read a report and you make changes. It's something we all have to participate in. So that's the kind of work that we're gonna be looking for, uh, to move forward.
Go ahead, Scott.
I'm just wondering with this new approach, when, when should we expect to hear how to get on again?
I was gonna ask the timeline question too.
Yeah, I mean, given the timeline of the school committee's next meeting being in two weeks, I'm not sure we'll have a full executed contract by then, but I think I'll be able to at least report back number of firms that we've reached out to, um, and give a status update. And then potentially, if we're not meeting over the summer, certainly potentially using, just if it's okay, just an avenue of communication through email and update the committee if that's necessary.
It is our goal to get started in the fall.
Correct.
To actually start doing the auditing.
To start doing the work.
Interesting. So one of the advantages of having somebody come from outside to do this is that you do get that outside perspective. And I'm wondering, will that still be, will we still be able to get that outside perspective? Because I think it's hard to really see those hard truths if we're looking at ourselves.
That is the work of the consultant, yes. That would be required.
Sean.
Uh, do we think this new approach will take longer?
Like I said, I don't have any assumptions that yet. Until we understand, you know, the detail of what we're working with and we can talk about what, uh, the consultant is willing to do relative to our budget, we can answer that, but we won't be able to answer that until we go through that negotiation phase.
So, so Ross was saying, if the next meeting in a couple of weeks, he'll be able to give us an update, will that be able to answer some of these questions that we're not able to answer right now?
I can't predict that future, Mr. Powell, I wish I could, wish I could. That, you, you know, we are two weeks short of, I gotta tell you guys, since this process just closed. I, I would anticipate, yeah, it's, it's one week. Um, so I, I would pretty much say that we're, um, won't be able to do that other than just, you know, cursory information, but, um, you know, this is the work. This isn't, and I'll remind the committee, this isn't something that is a vote for the committee, it's an update to the committee. Uh, so we're just gonna continue to just proceed forward and, and find the best fit for what we need to do here. Because we know the work we need to do, and it's finding the match to do that with.
And as a reminder, the line item is $50,000, as I recall. And so you're trying to be fiscally conservative and adhere to that, that line item, which is hard right now.
And, and it is, and that doesn't mean, you know, or, or remind everyone, that's a budget. So that's part of a professional development budget. And we have other, uh, streams, funding streams for our professional development that come through the forms of grant funding and other places. So no, it's not gonna be one of those things where you do an equivocation of, oh, they said $50,000 in the budget workshop and here's, no, it's within a budget. We, then, now that we know what we have, we forecast our activities for years, because sometimes through negotiations, you have savings in some areas and then sometimes other areas you don't. So that's all just balancing the overall budget through.
Um, so there's some, uh, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but there is some, um, meeting shifting that needs to happen. Um, and the good and the bad news is that we actually might meet more in the summer, considering all the MSBA stuff that we have to manage in early August.
Well, we never said we will one.
Yeah. So, um, just keep that in mind too, that, you know, we can put these things on the agenda in, in late summer. Uh, another question, Scott?
I was just gonna ask that, you know, given the timing of the next meeting, and it sounds like a lot of this is gonna be worked out in the next month or so, can we have this on the September agenda to hear more about what the plan looks like?
Absolutely.
And maybe in August, is what I'm saying.
We were working on the planning calendar day, so we'll put that update on for the first meeting in September.
Alright guys, so thanks for that part of the superintendent's update. Let's move on to updates of strategic work.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend to talk today about the, uh, NRSD Summer Academy as well as the literacy curriculum review, uh, kindergarten, fifth grade. Assistant Superintendent Friend.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Um, both of the updates are in support of our strategic work as it relates to curriculum and instruction and assessment. The first being an update, uh, related to Summer Academy 2023, which is an opportunity for Neshoba educators to continue their professional learning and curriculum development efforts. The week after we get out of school or students leave us, we are offering several virtual and in-person professional development opportunities from which to choose, and I've listed those for you here. Uh, to include supporting students with disabilities in the classroom, strategic instruction for English learners, several opportunities in support of Renaissance learning. Um, that's our universal screener that we've implemented this year for Star Reading and Star Math. And we're excited about offering those as well. Strengthening knowledge of universal design for learning, which has been work we've done this year and will continue during Summer Academy. We have some self-paced micro courses. Another offering relative to restorative practices. An opportunity related to deeper learning for expert learning. We'll once again offer mentor training, and I'm excited to share that I think our mentor coordinator shared with me this week that we have 15 educators, veteran educators who've signed up for that. A book study to be led by our curriculum director for math and science, Courtney Philbin. And then continued work with curriculum, uh, via several curriculum working groups. So we're looking forward to continuing that work when the students leave us. The second update is related to something that we've talked about throughout the year, and that's related to our curriculum review cycle and the launch of Arcade of Five Literacy Curriculum Review, launch of Phase One, which has begun. And I know that we've spoken about this with the committee throughout the year as it relates to our updated curriculum review cycle and the process of reviewing curriculum and instruction resources to ensure that they are meeting the needs of our learners in our updated DESI frameworks as we work to support our learners with a lens of continuous improvement for our students. As you're aware, Arcade of Five Literacy has been prioritized within our curriculum review cycle as a result of our efforts to ensure that the curriculum resources and instruction that our teachers have access to meet the mass literacy core components of the instructional block, which were launched in 2020. And I'd just like to share with you, if you're not aware, what those core components are. Um, they're divided up into four. Foundational skills, writing skills, engaging with complex text, and oral language. Specifically, the foundational skills core component includes print concepts, phonological awareness, advanced phonemic awareness, letter naming, phonics and decoding, and fluency. So the work of our, uh, Phase One of our curriculum review cycle, we'll take the lens of the mass literacy, this core instructional block, and the essential questions that are articulated. How do our current instructional practices, curricula, and materials that currently our teachers have through the units of study and foundations, how do they align with the core components of the literacy block as defined by mass literacy? Part of the first steps as it relates to the work in Phase One is to gather together a committee, an interdisciplinary committee, made up of grade-level teachers, special educators, English language learner educators, building administration, and the Department of Teaching and Learning to take a look at the data and what it tells us as it relates to how we're doing um, with student learning and the demonstration of student, student learning as it relates to these core components. Reviewing that and then making recommendations for next steps based on this review. To prepare for this work, um, the Department of Teaching and Learning this week has sent out a solicitation for interest in the committee, and I'm, I'm pleased to share that there's been great interest from Arcade of Five educators and our administrators in participating in this work. The curriculum review committee will begin meeting in September and will meet bi-monthly. Further support for this work will come from the district pursuing additional opportunities from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education next year. DESI is really providing lots of professional learning opportunities to support the work as it relates to these foundational skills and literacy. Some professional learning opportunities that we've already been made aware of include Massachusetts Literacy Planning Institute, Strong Start Early Literacy Screening, which we already have underway here in our district through Renaissance Learning, a Dyslexia Institute, and a Tiered Literacy Academy. We will also pursue grant funding opportunities as we've done this year to support the work as it relates to professional learning and any particular curricular resources that the committee and the Department of Teaching and Learning in concert with the district administration and building administration determine are necessary. We will be committed to keeping, and I will be committed to keeping this committee updated on our progress as well as all of our families and our teachers. We recognize that this is really important work. We see the value and the importance and criticality and the urgency of the work and committed to supporting the work and communicating our progress throughout. So the work is launched, Arcade of Five Literacy official.
Alright, any questions from the committee on this part of the update? I have a quick question. Uh, I, it's two-part. Have teachers started registering for the Summer Academy? And if so, do you have a good turnout?
Yes, and yes. The, um, the first two offerings, the Supporting Students with Disabilities in the Classroom and Strategic Instruction for English Learners are built.
Oh, wow.
Um, we have, um, a good turnout with the Renaissance learning. Student, uh, uh, our teachers are, um, interested and engaged in the self-paced courses, which you know that we've added, um, that modality to professional learning this year. And that's worked out really well as we work to model the principles of universal design for learning, multiple means of engagement. That's been important to us, and teaching and learning will continue to model that for educators because our hope too, and we know that our teachers are committed to doing this, is providing it for students too. So everywhere we can model that for our professional learning, we're working to model that for our teachers. So yes.
I can add an update on some of the work to the September agenda as well.
Oh, that would be great.
So we'll come back in September and update you on it.
Sure. Mike?
Um, I, I feel like we've, um, we've been using the Colquins Units of Study for some time, um, uh, as well as the foundations as instructional materials. And I'm wondering if we are evaluating the degree to which that is aligned with our curriculum review cycle? If that's already passed, or if we're gonna be looking forward to reviewing it?
That will be a part of this work. That, that will be, uh, integral to Phase One.
Reviewing how, how aligned that is with our curriculum work, great.
We have already submitted a survey. Um, actually, our Director of Curriculum for EDA and Social Studies has worked really dedicated and worked very hard, um, already to date with this work. And she and I have already met with staff in each of our elementary buildings. Um, we presented all of this, we've already begun to hear from them. Laura created, the other Laura, created a survey, uh, to solicit feedback from teachers. So we, we are already in possession of that. Around each one of these core components, how do our current curricular and instructional materials align? What do you need, what are you supplementing? What do you need? What are you supplementing? We want to make sure that our teachers have access to high-quality tier-long curriculum materials, and they're not exercising their energies on supplementing tier-long.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have maybe a silly question. I'm wondering about the first two bullet seat offerings from our academy. Do you guys give the teachers PDPs towards certification for that?
Those are offered from French. We've engaged with French River, and they offer PDPs for recertification.
Excellent. That's a real service. Teachers really appreciate that. Alright everybody, any final questions?
Alright, thank you for that update. That's fantastic.
And I'm sure that the good work will continue through the summer. We can really dig in. So guys, we have no new or unfinished business, and we're just cruising right along here. We really don't have any subcommittee work. However, I would like to reserve the floor for any people who want to share anything else. And I'm really talking to Joe mostly here because his subcommittee is still very much at work. So Joe, building committee update, what do you have for us?
Okay, well, as you were all aware, on the 31st of May's, we did approve project budget. In a total of $221,714,126. That's the total project budget that will be submitted to the MSBA on the 27th of this month. I would anticipate that there would be some slight relief from that amount vis a vis the town of Bolton, which is taken under advisement. Some determination on how much, if any, of the post-building fees, building permitting fees, the town would be willing to waive. It's essentially within their discretion at this point. And I think that Superintendent Downing and Mary Ann Williams, I apologize, I was not able to make that meeting for the select board, did a masterful job in elucidating what the statutory requirements are relative to determining reasonable fees. So my impression was that, the last comment from the Chair of the Bolton School Committee, Bolton Select Board, excuse me, who's also a member of our building committee, was that I think he was receptive to taking the matter under advisement. I think there's going to be a $2 million permitting waiver, but I do think there's going to be some relief in that regard. Moving forward, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, Superintendent Downing, our next meeting is June 15th. This was originally just going to be a building committee meeting wherein we would be then approving the schematic design submission to accompany the project budget on the 27th. However, in discussions with the OPM this week, they have requested some additional document prep time, and they are asking that with the Chair and the superintendent's consent that we hold yet another joint meeting on the 15th of this month to approve the schematic design submission. What this will entail would be, and if you're of a certain age, remember there was a time when college kids would try and suck as many kids into a phone booth or VW bug back in the day. That's what we plan on doing on the 15th. We're going to hold four meetings within a, hopefully within an hour, hour and a half time. Yeah, you're looking at me sort of quizzically, but C wants to close out the June 15th meeting and then have a quick five-minute meeting to approve the minutes of the building committee. Then we go into the district, the joint meeting, excuse me. Then Ms. Masterson would then take a five-minute recess and have her prepare the minutes and then approve the minutes of the joint meeting. That's the way it was planned out. That's the way it was suggested to me, so.
So two building committee meetings?
Yeah, so I hear what you're saying, Attorney Lee Sin is maybe not required. The redundancy of certifying the minutes for both the school building committee and the school committee vote is necessary for the MSBA submission.
I think that's what they'd like. I think that at least the OPM was asking that we have a dual meeting, like we have done back in June of last year and October of last year for the Plumer Design Program and the Schematic Design Vote. So as Chair, I will not, I'm going to look to see if we can keep this meeting regarding the schematic design to no more than 45 minutes. I think that the schematic design has been presented and vetted. I don't think there's significant deliberation required any further on this. Even if there was, I think it's very late in the game. So I'm looking at hard stop about 6:45, five-minute recess, let Ms. Win finish the minutes, prove those. We go into our joint meeting and hopefully be out of there by 7:15 at the latest. If that's, that suits your management.
So basically, let's put it to the committee really quick. So we have the 21st on our meeting calendar for all of this to go down. They are asking that we back it up to the 15th. So is there any objection there?
I might not.
Yeah, so it should be determined. We need a quorum, obviously, so.
I'll know soon.
So can I just see a show of hands of people who can make it on the 15th? It would be virtual. Yeah, so we have a quorum for the 15th. So on the meeting calendar, we're going to strike the meeting on the 21st. We're not going to meet on that Wednesday. We're going to back that meeting up to the 15th, which is a Thursday.
One week from tomorrow.
One week from tomorrow, virtual. You know, the rigmarole of these four meetings, you can just leave to Joe and me. You guys can just go along for the ride if you want, and we'll manage all the different things.
Yeah, it doesn't take that long. C is going to be prepared. And again, we're going to keep the agenda light. And we've done this twice before, at least at the building committee meeting, building committee level, excuse me, where we just take a little five-minute recess and C comes back with the minutes for approval, so.
And I will say that, we talked about this earlier today, the fourth meeting will actually be a tad longer because I think that we have handbooks too, like we have a few other business items.
This is putting to my question around policy for the Policy Chair.
Yeah, so, so long and short is that the fourth meeting that night might have a couple of additional business items.
Maybe a little bit longer than I think.
The handbooks, we won't be presenting on the 21st, and that's because of the policy considerations we have to do.
Okay.
And one last thing.
That's been taken off the agenda.
One last, just to remind the district committee that we will have to have a meeting in July, or close to the end of July, beginning of August.
August 1st.
Yeah, for the debt exclusion vote, so. I think that's it.
Incurrable.
So you guys can all maybe, so you're thinking August 1st will be the debt exclusion vote?
That was sort of the general target date in order for the 60-day timeline around notifications to towns and drawing a town meeting. So August 1st puts us squarely on that time where we can do that.
Is that virtual?
Yep.
We can do that virtually.
And so that vote that Kirk is talking about is the time at which this committee votes to incur the $241 million.
Right.
And some odd change. And then the towns by master of the law have 60 days?
There's two, yes. It's, this committee is bound to notify the Chairs of the three select boards within seven days. Then those Chairs have 60 days to hold the town meeting. So that takes them, and this is where we forecasted those dates around September 16th, 18th. We made some adjustments to that because I know it falls in a Rashishon, yes, so.
And just to clarify for the new members, the vote that we're looking for from the towns is essentially a no vote. A veto. We're looking for a vote, essentially a no vote, to override the district's vote to incur debt. It's a little bit confusing. If you go back into the statute, you know, we're going to have a vote of yes on this, but essentially, it's voting yes essentially saying, yes, we approve of the district's incurrence of debt in this regard.
So that's a lot of detail. Go ahead.
The only other thing I wanted to add is that there will be a public forum for members of the community who want to hear more details on the budget and the schematic design on June 14th, which is a Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, next Wednesday. And it will be live streamed, and it will also be held in person at the high school, so.
Any other questions or comments about the school building committee?
So just to be clear, June 15th is in, June 21st is out.
Correct. And that's at the behest of the request of the OPM. I just want the committee to know, I'm not doing this. I'm not trying to jam as many meetings as I can throw. They asked me this week, can I get approval, can I get approv, can I approve the advancement of the date? And I said, as far as the building is concerned, I was fine with that, but I had to get the Chair's approval for the district committee.
And we're thinking on the 15th at 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM for building committee. I'm going to try and hard stop at 6:45, and then 10 minutes for C, and then we start your meeting at seven-ish.
So if you are not on the school building committee, which most of you are not, you would be joining us, you know, zooming in around 6:45, 6:55. However, the school building committee meeting does provide a lot of context for the school committee meeting, and so if you want to zoom into the school building committee meeting at 6:00 PM, you are certainly welcome to do that as a member of the public. And that way, the school committee meeting will actually go a little bit faster because you will already have seen the presentation. So that's up to your discretion. Any other questions?
Do you want to pick dates in August so we can notify the OPM of the date that we're going to intend to incur debt?
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'd be doing that.
Alright guys, so let's solidify that incurring debt meeting. Kirk is saying that August 1st or 2nd?
Yeah, August 1st, August 2nd, that's the sweet spot to meet all the regulations and timelines.
August 2nd is a Wednesday. Is that okay, everybody? Tends to be our day.
Isn't it virtual?
Virtual. You can zoom from Hawaii or whatever tropical location.
I may be in the near shores of Mars.
Okay, so school committee meeting, August 2nd, 6:30 PM to vote to incur the debt for, you know, if all goes well with the preceding events. Awesome. Any other subcommittee things that you'd want to bring up? Budget and warrant?
Yeah, budget and warrant has not met since our last meeting, but I do have some updates, and I am going to be looking for some guidance. We have our next meeting on Monday, June 12th. And particularly for the new members, we recommended the formation of an OPEB Management Advisory Committee. And we proposed a membership of one resident and one town administrator or designee per town, as well as a central office rep and a school committee rep. The central office rep is not a voting member, so there are a total of seven possible members. To date, we have three resident volunteers for Bolton, and we have a TA designee. So Bolton is more than set. I just got word that we have a TA designee for Lancaster, but we don't have a resident. And we don't have either the TA designee or the resident for Stowe. And so the guidance that I'm looking for is how we want to proceed with our June 12th meeting. Whether we, there are a few options. We can approve the makeup as is, or we can keep the lottery and choose, by lottery, choose one of the Bolton reps and then keep the other remaining slots open, and then have that committee approve membership as they come up, which I think is probably the best move. But we'd like to get that done soon so that they can start their work this summer. So we're just in a bit of a jam because we don't have all the slots filled, but I do think it's a good idea for them to start work over the summer.
King?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask how you've advertised the openings in Lancaster for the resident spots in Lancaster and Stowe.
Yeah, I got in touch with all three of the town halls, and they sent out a town blast. And that's how our residents found out Bolton. But again, nothing from Stowe and Lancaster, so, I mean, it's, we could ask for another blast. But in the interim, I guess what I'm wondering is, should we proceed with the approval of membership? And if we approve of that at our next meeting, we would then have to bring it as a recommendation to the school committee, so there's like an extra step there. And all of this is sort of delayed because we kept getting names trickling in. You see the tension is?
Do vacancies ever trip up a committee from proceeding?
No, but once we, once we have membership and we approve at the budget and warrant level, then we would want to go back to the school committee level and sort of get the blessing of the school committee, and then move forward.
And couldn't you just like get that blessing each time a new member comes on board?
We would leave it up to the committee itself.
We probably do a quorum of the defined membership of the advisory?
Well, we have four, one, two, three, we have four of the seven.
So that's a quorum, right?
Well, we could put three Bolton members on if we wanted to.
Right, that's the other option, is we could, the only problem there is if we accept three Bolton members and then Stowe and Lancaster trickle in, then you've got three Bolton members, one Lancaster and one Stowe, so.
I think that advisories can actually operate a little bit more flexibly in that they don't, they have to adhere to open meeting law, but they do not need a quorum present to proceed and discuss.
Meeting.
That if you have these open positions, to Amy's question, if we have these vacancies, that would prevent a handful of people from meeting.
Well, I'd also like to say about, you know, if we want to have more citizen representation, you know, I don't think allowing three Bolton representatives is going to have a detrimental impact on the committee. It's not like the Bolton representatives are going to be in favor of things, they're going to harm Lancaster and Stowe. That's not actually possible because it's basically going to be making a recommendation to the school committee about how to fund the OPEB fund. And, you know, if the school committee isn't happy with what they recommend, the school committee can just say, take Ike, and, you know, so be it, so.
Dina, do you know what we're talking about today?
Kind of, sort of, but I wanted to say that I live in Stowe. I haven't received anything about this, so.
That's what I was going to say, that I've had trouble with getting word out through those channels with building committee communications, and I have found that it's useful to kind of have redundancy. So you might want to, whatever message, you might want to reach out to the Stowe Independent, like other media formats, because not everybody has email and double-check with the people that you contacted in the government.
I have double-checked, I tripled and quadrupled check with them, yeah.
None of us, Scott, did you receive an email? None of us received one.
I got one in Bolton.
I don't, I can't find anything in my email from Lancaster.
I don't think that we have as a prolific emailing list serve system as Bolton does.
Okay, I'll look into it. In the interim, when Monday comes up, would we, as a committee, approve membership from the three volunteer members from Bolton? Or do we want to trim it to one, assuming that there's equal representation for all three towns at some point?
I would say that you need to give Stowe, Lancaster an opportunity to present volunteers, right? If it sounds like there hasn't been any sort of communication from the town that they're spoken positions, it seems unfair to stack it with all Bolton residents.
I have a suggestion, and I don't know that this is appropriate or not, but could this be something that is put out through your channels?
You're happy to.
We did.
We did?
We did. It was in the common.
It only goes to parents who are already overtaxed. I mean, what we're looking for.
They're not the audience that's as interested in open.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? Not that I wish to add to pile of obligations to my colleague, Mr. Porch, but you might want to take a minute or two just to peruse the Attorney General's website. I'm not so certain that advisories are subject to the open meeting laws. And I think that there were three recent decisions involving CPAC, CPAC complaints, where the Attorney General had ruled that these types of volunteer advisory committees are not subject to open meeting laws. So it might make your task a little bit easier.
That's true. Although I do know that Dear J just wrestled with this, and they think they are bound by open meeting law, so it would be very helpful if you would provide them with different information.
We'll reach out and get some guidance.
You know what? I'll do this, Madam Chair, because I'm the one who brought it up. This happened with CPAC, and there were three, and I mentioned it in one of the meetings a number of months ago, there were three open meeting law complaints filed with the Office of the Attorney General. And when I looked at that, I said, I wonder how many open meeting law violations has the Office of the Attorney General have received in the past 30 years? And my suspicion is that would be zero. And I think that those were targeted complaints. And I think that those were, those are targeted complaints from outside organizations that have taken the position that it's an us against them world when it comes to special education. And the Office of the Attorney General was very keen to point out that, no, we're not going to hold these types of parent-volunteer advisory councils or groups to the open meeting law. It's hard enough to find volunteers to serve on these. As we saw from the CPAC presentation, I mean, they're going to be down to like one or two officers at the end of the school year. So I don't, I will make the point, I will send you the opinion. Let's, let's one thing out.
Keep in mind though that CPAC is just quasi.
Statutory, yeah, yeah.
Versus an advisory, so can you pull it to a part?
Yeah, I'll look at that, yeah.
So, so just to be clear then, once we meet and there are, I think that there are going to be members that show up to our meeting, the budget and warrant meeting, we can give them the green light to proceed, to begin that work as a committee?
Because you have three from Bolton right now?
We have, yeah, we have three from Bolton, a TA representative, representative and a TA representative from Lancaster, plus we have central office and Scott, who's going to represent the school committee. So we.
And you have a TA representative from Stowe?
I'm sorry?
TA representative from Stowe?
Not yet.
Oh, nobody from Stowe. It's troubling. So I guess I, the question is, are we okay with the committee currently having over-representation from Bolton?
Right.
With the hope that will eventually be balanced by future volunteers so that they can get working? Is everybody okay with that?
Well, Dana was not.
Yep, but how, can I get a thumbs up if your question?
So if we did that and someone from Lancaster came forward, is there a limit to the size of this advisory group? Could we just add someone from?
No, we made a recommendation of seven membership committee. I suppose it can be modified.
So I think that advisories do have voting capacity because they are going to put something before us and so they do vote. So perhaps what you could do is proceed with saying, there must be balance.
Great.
Eventually. So in this exploratory phase, perhaps it's okay to be overrepresented in one town, but when it comes, if you are to bring another person on from Stowe or Lancaster, you would need to balance out the voting. In whatever way you see fit. Maybe people would step down from the voting roles.
Okay, okay, that's fair. I mean, I suppose it would be like having a non-voting member attend and, you know, comment.
Yep.
But then only have one of the members have.
Would everybody be okay with that?
Yeah.
Can you give me a thumbs up if you're okay with that sort of arrangement?
Great, okay.
Okay, great.
That's it, thank you.
So there's a very quick policy issue that I wanted to give Kirk the mic on. Do you want to illuminate?
Yes, just very quick. The reason why we're not going to bring the elementary handbooks forward to you in the next meeting is because there's just a couple of pieces regarding civil rights, statutory updates that need to be updated in our handbooks that we advised by DESI to do. So Ms. Brennan and I are going to work on that and we just need to come before the policies subcommittee with the first read of that. So we may need to reach out over the summer to do that so we can present the handbooks early in the school year.
Because there is a current policy in our manual that is out of date?
Yes, a couple of pieces that are statutorily based and when they're updated to the statute, we got to update it in the handbooks and we, so we got to update the policies. So that's the guidance we were given by DESI.
So again, guys, fill out those policy subcommittee preference survey that's in the meeting materials as soon as possible so that I can kind of get these subcommittees set up, maybe in advance of the workshop and we can do some of that work over the summer.
Can I ask, just a clarifying question that might benefit the new members too, is that we're given three choices, like first, second, third choice, but how many subcommittees is each member?
Try to keep everybody to two?
To serve on.
Okay, try. I think everybody was two, a couple of us had three. Okay, so guys, the agenda now, no other subcommittee stuff? All right, so just really quickly, items for next agenda. The now June 15th meeting, which I'm going to change that in the planning calendar. So the planning calendar, as you guys know, is on our website. Alita has already cranked out a new planning calendar for the next school year, but this is the old one, our current one. So on the 15th, this is a remote meeting. You can see that the first matter is an executive session, so this meeting would start at 6:00 PM, well, the times are all messed up, but we're going to, so five meetings.
Well, executives, what, what the structure of the meeting would look like? School building committee, close. Open school building committee, verify minutes, close. Open the school committee meeting.
Check the minutes.
And present the, from the building committee, close that. The fourth meeting will then be the school committee meeting with these agenda items, of which executive session is embedded into that where we talk about the contract negotiations. Because it's in that that we can then present the minutes of the presentation of the building project.
And we'd have to have a fifth to approve the school committee minutes, right?
It lost me at, at, what I was thinking, what I was thinking would be more, what I was thinking, because they're asking for a joint meeting, start the joint meeting at 7:00, then we can adjourn the joint meeting and then go into our own meeting. And I was thinking actually putting the, putting the executive session at the back end.
Because that's just us.
It makes more sense.
Do it like we did in the old days when we had.
Old school.
Executive session at the end of the meeting.
Better gets a check app that day or something.
You're going to have to have two school committee meetings anyway. If the first school committee is just simply the standalone item of the building project and you close that meeting, then while those minutes are being crafted in the duration and that's inserted at the beginning of the next meeting, we certify the minutes there. Do you see what I'm saying? Rather than, if you embed all that in the same meeting, the delay of the person crafting the minutes for the whole meeting and the additional items will take that time and be that gap between the two meetings in order to then verify the minutes.
But the last meeting we did, the last joint meeting we did, we used the building committee's Zoom link for, because of segueing from one meeting to the next. So if you're doing it this way, don't I have to shoo away all of the building committee meeting members and then have them come back to the joint meeting afterwards?
No, 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 the joint meeting is still there first. Do the joint meeting first.
Right, do the joint meeting first.
Right.
An executive session at the end.
Right, right, that's, okay, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll, we'll hash it out later, but just be prepared for a point to write. Go ahead, Scott.
I'm just wondering if we can do this. I'm not, my knowledge of the 48-hour notification requirements is poor, so can you have a meeting to approve minutes where the minutes haven't been released 48 hours ahead of time?
I mean, we have many, many times.
All you have to do is have the item on the agenda to approve the minutes of the meeting. You do not have to have the actual minutes themselves.
Materials are not required.
You just, you just have to post what you're going to do, just the agenda.
Guys, I would like to enter in a business item. And it is ultimately to do with what I heard in public comment tonight. And so if there is no objection, I'd like to bring back representatives from Dr. J, Lori Burnett, perhaps, and any other members of Dr. J to come and speak to us about what they envision for, what they can advise us on with regard to the commitments that we can reaffirm and with regard to the strategic plan and our core values and get information from them on the 15th so that we can then take it to the workshop in August. And when we sit down to meet and hammer out our goals, it can be informed by what they share with us on the 15th. Is everybody okay with that? And Sharon and I, maybe we can meet and talk with them in advance?
We'll need to check with them because we pushed that meeting up a week.
Yep.
But they are hoping that they.
I am learning.
Be able to do that.
Okay, so. I'll just leave it at that. All right, guys, anything else on new, next meeting agenda items? If anything ever comes to your mind after we adjourn, you can certainly reach out to me and as long as we have time and space, we'll add it to the agenda. Okay. That's it, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
10 seconds?
10 seconds.
Nice job, Ethel.
Amy, so funny.
Oh, those in favor. That is unanimous from what I can tell. Thank you, everybody.